Okay, meeting's called to order. Will you please join me in... Oh, roll call. I jumped it yesterday.
She did.
Roll call.
Secretary Halberson.
Here.
Thank you, Member Holmes.
Here.
Thank you, Chairman Lewis.
Here.
We'll have Member Mark Taylor, Vice Chairman of Tilt Addison again. Member Siegel?
Present.
And Member Subdouin.
Here.
Thank you, we have a forum.
Okay, please join me in the pledge to our flag. If you can't stand, do so. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have our agenda here before us. Are there any additions or modifications? I believe that what we were just discussing can still be discussed, so. Feel comfortable. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
No.
No? Do we know? Okay, well then I'll ask for motion to approve the agenda. Oh.
Second.
Most favors, aye, aye, opposed? Okay, agenda's approved, so we'll jump into guidelines for public comment. This is the time and place for anyone, this is a regular meeting of the governing boards. This is the time and place for anyone at any of our sites or from the public to speak on any item not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda?
There's nothing in the board email. Does anyone at any of the sites have people who want to make public comment?
Okay. Chico's in the limelight, North Valley. Let's go, alright. Let's do it.
Alright, good morning.
Good morning, good morning.
I'm excited to get out of this little presentation. Most of the pictures are pictures I did from a sort of friendship copy, but there's some AI things also. So with that, I want to say thank you for MTSS because I learned about so many things over the summer, including how to put it together. So, um, here's our new staff. So Beth Rowan and Kimberly Burkett joined us this year. She's, Beth is our paraprofessional in social media coordinator. I'm a little biased, I never met her before she joined us, but Chico is such a small community. That I got like a, she's an amazing woman being from one of my best friends. I've known her for 30 years.
Oh wow.
Yeah, and then Kimberly Burkett is now our new co-admin, and I'll talk about that more in a minute, but she was in EC with a multi-subject credential, passion for SEL. And Kimberly and I went to the same elementary school.
Oh my goodness.
What? I didn't know that. In Connecticut? No, here. Oh, that's right, she started here.
In backseat.
Yeah, she started here.
How about it?
Oh, I'm ready. I don't have a lot on this, but we did share interim admin roles, and that would be Sam, Susan, and I for the first semester, and even though there's a lot of blank space here, it was a lot of work. That's the right word. And so we just, we went over different pieces of admin, but then depended on Abigail and Jana and Craig and our other admin to handle a lot of the nitty-gritty stuff. So, and this is one of the AI ones. Nobody taught to take pictures with Irene. Probably because these were all very in-depth sessions. They sometimes involve tiers, but the word that comes from these sessions is rough. So all of us learned more about, you can go ahead and go to the next one.
Who's our math coach?
Irene Solinger.
That's the no-trainer.
I gave him her bio.
Yeah, PhD out of running.
Yeah. In my presentation.
So these are like, I just stuck how many times we were meeting with her up there because...
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, we had pretty consistent meetings with her, and then she offered things like office hours. I'm coaching Sasha Wilson. And we, we learned a lot, so it was just that above-the-line behavior, but also like, are you being a victim here? Let's talk about how, you know, your hero role is, da-da-da-da. So at the end of it, in December, January, we started really thinking, what do we want admin to look like moving forward, or at least for a semester? We go one semester at a time.
What's the biggest thing you learned?
What is the most...
One thing, from all that, what would be a big takeaway?
Um, well, one big takeaway is, I mean, this is, this is personal for me, but it's like a whole body yes. Like listening to what is really going on, so hearing the conversation, but then being in tune with like, does that feel right? And doing that in a way that is, you know, obviously appropriate at school, but just, yeah, knowing the difference, like making big distinctions, yeah, and decision-making techniques. It's not something I had thought of previously. I'm more like a teacher kind of person. Positive narrative, things are always helpful, but this was a different way to, yeah, experience decision-making. Yeah, that's just one. That's, and I don't even know if that's the biggest one, but it's the one that I have used the most frequently in my own personal life, and yeah, onsite as well. I know Beth and I did that the other day also. She was like, okay, let's talk about this. And let me tell you about this whole body again. Here's Kimberly with her daughter Natalie, and Sarah with Ruby. And they both have kids who are almost exactly this same age. And they just, they self-described as having a lot of the same strong character traits, but not in the way that they're butting heads. Of course, it hasn't been a whole weekend.
Their personalities are very complementary too.
Yes, they, they are. And then I...
You guys know Sarah, she's been with us for 11 years.
But, go ahead and, yeah, so I asked them what they wanted me to share, and they both wrote just little bios for you. Kimberly Burkett was born and raised in Dress Alley, lived all over New York, Virginia.
Caribbean peace court.
Oh, yeah.
In the Caribbean, yeah.
Yes, and that's where she met her husband. Yeah, and then she briefly moved to Connecticut, so that was, yeah.
We hired him. Connecticut.
Pardon?
She was living in Connecticut when we hired him.
Yeah, and she was there for a few years and then worked on social emotional learning and equity. And yes, she is a knitter, so she wears a lot of her knit sweaters. Quite talented. And then this is Sarah, and she's like, I don't know if they know who I am.
Like the picture.
Of course they do.
I'm sorry?
The picture's great.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and she actually, like Sarah took that, she's like, I don't know if I have a headshot. So she took that on Wednesday. For you guys. So, yeah, I would, I would describe her as super organized. She doesn't say that about herself, but she's also an amazing listener, so they will even... They led their first meeting together a week and just a day ago. And I would say that already I've experienced change because I said, I don't like this, I don't want to do this. And Sarah's like, let's talk about this more, and then it's like, there's a follow-up conversation. And all of that sounds like it's normal because it's how it has been, but it was not how first semester went. And so ultimately, I didn't feel like I wanted to get hurt. So it's like, it's a lot of progress, and I feel like that's the type of administrator that she's going to be. Let's hear her talk and then move on. Alright. And so this is what's coming at us, or no, I'm sorry, this is what's behind us, this is the fall semester. So Sam does a walking excursion each Monday and Wednesday, first block. But it also involves journal writing, so he, yeah, he takes the kids, it's about two walks to Big Will Park.
Yeah, it's a great walk.
Oh, it's an, it's an amazing walk, and some of our students come to school just for that walk. I taught effective writing last fall, I don't have any...
There are a lot of kids in that.
I did, I had 10, and same thing, four of the students were onsite students. Six of my students last semester came in just for the effective writing class.
Yeah.
And so they were only there from 9:15 to 10:15, but they were earning English credits. Susan did game club, and then Kimberly did arts. I have some pictures of these things here. So this is Susan with her group in our new flex classroom. Art, some of the art products there that were, well, now they're on our walls, so. And you can go, this is Big Will Park and One Mile, the kind of famous pool that's made from our creek water. And then these are other things that we've done, so you can just go through this slide, and I'll just show the pictures. I don't have any pictures of students because the students who show up for our field trips are not always the same ones who come onsite, and a lot of them also just have the, you know, photo. So I, when I was looking through our pictures, so many of them are covered with the hat base for protection, that I was like, oh, that's just not going to work. But this is what upper part looks like, even after the campfire, so that was taken this fall. And then this is a pumpkin drop at Chico State. Here's John Giocinto. He and I took the students over on, it happened to be on Halloween. And you can see the pumpkin falling out of the sky, there's a crane, and it's a physics exhibition. So, yeah, it is really cool. So they're up, you know, there's someone on the ground, there's someone up on the crane, they're both on mics, and they're describing like, yeah, the assets of physics. And then John took everyone, he led this one, because right here, this is his fiancee Rachel, and she's the, she's running the museum of anthropology right now. So our students got a very special tour of this museum of anthropology. This one's just fun. You've probably seen these ones before, our annual cow skate trip.
That's cool.
Yeah. And I want to point out Miss Jana Gaskell right there.
On a field trip?
Yeah, she was on a field trip also.
To see OJ's friend do the Scrooge, that's him, that's the field trip, that's the theater. And I sent you the picture of him and me, and me, sent you the picture of him and me, to standing there afterwards, he came out and saw me afterwards.
Yeah, it's a, it's a nice theater, and we have, I mean, some really good performances. We're going again this month to see the syncopated ladies, the tap dance performance there, so. And this is just for fun, this is for a scare week. We happen to have a lot of extra-large t-shirts of the blue, and we have a very creative mom who volunteered to make a robe.
Oh my god, that's awesome!
So when it's time to wear our t-shirts, at least one of us will also be wearing them hand-made.
That's so cool.
It is. And then this is, this is like the big thing that happened over the fall, so.
Finally.
Yeah, we...
This one's next.
We transformed the space. And this would be another area of growth for everybody, but there were, there was a decorating committee, so. Craig came in and told us that our place could do something for it. And I was like, yeah, I agree, and then he's like, you know, you can change it, and I, I was like, oh, no, actually I didn't. We were just living in this, so he's like, get me a proposal, let's make it happen, and oh my goodness. We, we had to clear some space because we had three sets of tables in two rooms. So you can imagine that was already super cramped, it just didn't make sense. So I'd take tables to storage, but before we could actually take them to storage, we had to empty storage. And, yeah, so it was this whole process, and then of course purchasing, thank you for that as well. That's just the fun part, but it was the, the other part that's, yeah, took a lot of time and communication.
Is that what it looks like now?
No, no.
That couch is almost what it looks like now.
The couch is very close, yes.
I, I got to go shopping with our credit card, with them, it was fun with them.
Alright.
Yes. So we've had the chessboard for a while. We now also have like a dedicated student space in one area where there's a football table and games and a couch, and they have like an actual break space. But these are just some fun pictures showing our students. Okay, this is the art room, mid-project, because the virtual board tables were already moved in there, but we don't have all of our storage back here, and this is without the students, what it looks like if you walk into that space now. And if you turn around, there's a big TV that will cast from our computers, so that...
And those walls, the glass walls, do you remember how Pivot Riverside has those clings on them?
Yeah, right.
We're doing it there, yeah.
So, yeah, this was my idea. We couldn't get everyone together because the couches also came a week and a day ago. So we took three different pictures on three different days and tried to get everyone together. And that was my makeshift Photoshop kind of thing.
I wouldn't have known if you didn't tell me.
He's right.
I wouldn't have known if you didn't tell me.
Absolutely right.
Oh, yeah, so three different days, all of our, our onsite staff, and then you can see what it looks like when you walk in. And for the first time ever, I brought a book to work. I didn't end up putting it in because there's always so much work to do, but I was like, oh, there's a space that feels comfortable, and I can actually relax at work.
It is, it is fun to be bouncing on couches with four staff members in the middle of Costco giggling, it was very fun.
Oh, it was, yeah, and this was definitely the right, right one. I mean, it took a few reconfigurations to get it right in the room, but yeah, there it is, and it's beautiful. And then this is what we're calling our flex classroom because it becomes a little bit of everything. It's where I teach English, but it's also where game club was, and you can see our, our new Amazon storage. I don't want to put together more cabinets for our hotel. Together, four of the five cabinets that we got.
I'm glad you did do before and after on this particular room, the before was not...
This is the room that held two sets of tables, and it's a very small space.
Yeah, and all kinds of stuff was piled up, so they got a chance to put it all away.
Yes, and I do have to just shout out to Beth, she's also super organized, and she loves label makers. So when you open these cupboards now, it's like, sight, no, sight, and everything is like super labeled and organized. Yes, awesome. So this is next, what's coming up. I started teaching poetry, so this is one of the responses to what we need. I started the year last year teaching yoga because I love yoga. There are actually three of us onsite who are certified yoga teachers. But I found that students really needed English credit, so I switched over fall to fiction writing. And then I was like, but we actually only have two classes approved, so over the summer I was given the opportunity to create a third class, so now I'm teaching the, the third English class onsite. And then arts going to continue with Kim, and Beth is going to, with help and collaboration, potentially start an art club that ties to what Kim is also teaching during her regular class, so that would be for extended hours. And then, this is just looking back, so we have amazing new staff. We have community ties that are getting stronger. Our space looks beautiful. And then we have these expanded offerings, like the art club, the art classes, and then also poetry. So then the last one's just for fun, this is just us hanging out. As a staff.
That was fun. It's one of my favorite rooms.
Awesome.
Thank you, Amy. That's awesome.
You guys have had some definite challenges in your eyes and tutu, it's great. Thank you for sharing that. That place was definitely due for a redo. I thought that three years ago when I was last there.
Well, you will be happily, I think, surprised by it.
Well, my thing is always, if somebody walks in the door via student or a staff line, it must be a great place for students. I mean, first impressions, always will be it. And frankly, furniture and stuff is one of the cheaper things you can get.
Yeah.
And they last, and as long as they want to last, and not to do it, stupid. It's great sales for a staff person to go, I never saw a school, I never looked like this, I get to work here, or etc., etc. Though I would encourage you to keep, yeah.
I'm working.
And, and I think also, the problem should be from like six months ago from now, about what's happening.
It's huge, what they did.
That's kind of, looking back a week is kind of, you know, but six months before going, oh, this is where we were, which we wasted, now look who we are, and that's pretty cool.
They've done a great job. When Amy mentioned about the class, when we're going to give credit, we literally have to create like the syllabus and make sure it's aligned to the standards, and it has to be submitted a specific way, and then we put it into Buzz, which is how the kids access it. So we have some things like Sam's that they're not getting, I mean, they're getting PE, I think, out of it, but, you know, he doesn't have to submit a class, but when we're giving English credit for a core class, but we're doing it in a unique way, the Amy way, with her experience, she has to create it, and we put it into Buzz.
Who approves it through Buzz?
Abigail and her team.
So with them, not some nameless person in the separate moment?
No, no.
That's a lot of change there though, so I mean, that's, and that's good. How we communicate that is important, back to what we did yesterday, right? Enrollment could be stronger there too, and so we have a whole new site and new program and new people and new... Read it, get that message out.
The credit tree, remember that, you've seen pictures of it, Amy and Sarah are going to work with staff to change that. They ran it past me the other day, we're going to do some cooler, better colors and stuff, it's getting old. So that, that, the table with the chessboard on it, mosaic, Susan made that, just so you know. I think you did that, you've seen, I'm sure.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Well, now move on, Liz is going to give us a overview of our financial condition. A little different from yesterday, this is our more traditional presentation. Let's hit it.
Yes, yeah, yesterday was a very kind of different, different set of topics than the big picture, but this is kind of our standard financial update. So the final recap of the 2024 fiscal year, you saw the audit and certified debt yesterday, but we'll just have some, some data from that highlighted, and then an update on this year's budget and forecast, and the first look at the governor's January budget proposal, which I'm sure you've probably all heard things already, since it's already February 1st today. So yeah, this is the time where we have three fiscal years in one presentation. So to start off with the audit, it was a clean audit report as we discussed yesterday, and as Chairman Lewis brought up, you know, we're at about an $11 million budget, so the organization has definitely grown. We ended last year pretty strongly overall, and as usual, there are some interesting things we have to do in Riverside because of the way they require us to use their financial system, and there are some limitations on that, which always results in some audit adjustments, particularly to certain revenues that we are allowed to prioritize as deferred revenues and recognize the revenue in the year that we spend it. But their system doesn't allow that for certain types of things, so there's always audit adjustments. This year, there's about $67,000 of those types of specific funds that were included in the audit adjustments. Ending fund balances percentage of expense, we do have some differences across the sites. The majority sells at North Bay, however, North Valley, San Diego, and Riverside are fairly strong. Riverside is the only site that currently has their ending fund balance lower than the board's target, but it is increasing, and that's largely because they had those five years of large depreciation that was hitting the expense and making it a bit difficult to build the ending fund balance, but that is essentially done now, so we're going to see Riverside ending fund balance kind of start to get a little bit more solid over the next few years. Any cash balances, same thing, we discussed this a little bit yesterday about how the three smaller sites didn't quite have the recommended 90 days cash on hand, but that North Bay more than made up for it, which does allow for, you know, some short-term, you know, cash lending if the need arises. So at this point, as of June 30th, North Bay had many days cash on hand in excess of the nine. So that's the one site where we definitely do have kind of a, a stronger cash position, which will be useful for the things that we were just talking about, like facilities. This is the site that's going to have upgrades to furniture, decor, and changing some, some tenant improvements and things like that. So we're in a good position to do that at North Bay.
Liz, I have a question.
Yes.
How, you know, this is a snapshot, what is our low point in cash?
That's a really good question, it depends on...
In the month, you mean?
Yeah.
Year, come year.
What time of year? You know, there was a time in our lives when we worried about such things.
We borrowed.
Yes, so this year, there, there hasn't been much of a low point. Usually August, August, September can be kind of a low point because we don't get our funds kind of started for the year. We don't really get much, you know, in, over the summer.
But you don't, you don't have this by site?
I do not have this by site, but I can work with edtech if that would be helpful to get cash flow by site.
I mean, my assumption is that, you know, some of the sites are borrowing from the other site.
We do periodically need to do that, yes, and it's usually short-term and paid back. We, at the end of the year, we did end with all sites, as you saw in this one. But all sites were cash positive, and, you know, and when you look at the amounts, relatively, the small sites are, look, really small, but it's still, you know, this is, these are hundreds, or sorry, there are thousands over there. So it's like, this is $500,000 in cash, so, you know, it's, even though it's a small bar, this is still a fair amount of cash for the small. Oh, also just to point out that with the cash, we were talking about restricted versus unrestricted funds, and about 12% of this cash was in restricted funds. So the majority was unrestricted by the eight percent. Any questions about the, the year ended? Moving on to current year. Enrollment in attendance, so the top section was the last update from November, what our enrollment and attendance assumptions were. The bottom is our current update based on what's actually happened, and also not just what's actually happened with past attendance, but what our current staffing levels are looking like. We do have several staff out on leave, and in order to make sure we're not overloading the, the staff that are, are working, we've reduced the projected overall annual enrollment for North Bay a bit in particular. You'll notice our, our annual average enrollment has dropped from 457 to 445, and that's just largely due to the fact that most of the people that are out on leave, who will serve a caseload of students, like an educational coordinator, some of those leaves are at North Bay. And so the students' number has gone down, but you will also see a corresponding decrease to expense on the compensation benefits side. So it's not something that I'm particularly concerned about for the budget, it's just kind of responding to the actual.
Attendance rates, 80 and 82, those are really low.
Yes.
I thought we had done some good work on students to log in.
We did last year, and saw some increases to attendance.
Really low.
Yeah, and actually, Jana, Abigail and I have a, a conversation set to kind of discuss this a little bit and figure out if we can see, you know...
Because getting a student to a 10 shouldn't, you should build it, I mean, right?
Right, well, and to be fair, last year, for example, with North Valley, last year was their highest-ever attendance year, and this year is kind of back to more what it had been previously. So if, you know, part of our analysis is going to be like, was last year just an anomaly for some reason? Because this is more in line with what we've seen in the past. It's still not what we want, we want every site to be over 90%, we want every student to have attendance over 90%, particularly, you know, because the, the definition of chronically absent is if you have less than 90% attendance for the year. And if a student is missing more than 10% of school days, that's, that's a significant amount.
Are there, are there... So if you were to look at the student population, is it specific students that dragged this down?
It varies. There, there are some students, for example, that are going through the truancy process, you know, that are, you know, they're, they're missing like 10 days in a row, and then they attend for one or two days, and then they're missing, and trying to figure out like what is going on there, and can we go back in? And I don't know if Abigail or Jana, if you guys want to speak to that at all, but there, there is variance, you know, there are some students...
I, I just thought to myself, I said, look at these numbers, it's a, you know, it's an average, and, you know, if you look at it, if you really look at the numbers, is that what it looks like on average? Or is that like just some, some numbers sort of dragging?
Some of our sub-populations have lower attendance than others.
The virtual versus onsite, was, was a big change, difference between the two, on this kind of stuff?
We're analyzing that, actually. We, by way, that's Abigail.
Yeah, I think for the most part, we have lots of really successful virtual students who have great attendance. And to your question, sure, a student who's really struggling to engage in our program can affect these numbers, but we also try to encourage staff to look at their students who have 80% attendance, so they're engaging with us regularly, but we need to close a gap. We need to figure out why they're not logging on on Fridays or Wednesdays. We need to figure out why they're not logging on on Fridays or why, you know, once a week, we can't find anything for them, things like that. So a lot can be made up by the students who are engaging with us regularly, but need to make sure they're a really sharp routine every single day. So kind of depends how you look at it.
Is the North Bay one typical for the years?
Yes, so 80 to 82, in recent years, it had gone up a little bit, like 82 to 84. But yeah, kind of in the low to mid 80s has been very consistent for North Bay and North Valley in years past. So last year was, was kind of an anomalous year with higher attendance percentages. San Diego and Riverside have been fairly constant. We did drop San Diego's rate just one percentage point to 92 based on how the actuals are going this year. And Riverside, as it has grown, the attendance rate has gone down a little bit. It used to be around 90. And so now it's at 87 based on, on how these have going, been going last year as well. They, I believe their final attendance percentage was like 86.9 or something like that last year. So 87, it's, it's something we have seen as schools get bigger. Sometimes the, the attendance rates tend to go down a little bit. Not 100% sure of the causes of that, but maybe we can include some of that in our discussions. So overall, not a huge change, only 1.19 ADA. But there is a somewhat significant decrease for North Bay due to staffing and enrollment capacity there. And then Riverside is a bit higher due to the fact that we had large demand and just kind of ended up with more students than we had originally thought we would. And as we mentioned yesterday, now we're, we're captain doing lottery at Riverside as well because they're just kind of curving at the seams. So how does that impact the forecast? So the, the largest green bar that says cert, that's a certificated compensation and benefits. And that is largely due to either unfilled positions or folks out on leave, they're taking unpaid leave, I mean, things like that. So that's a significant impact to the forecast. The next bar is the increase in LCFF funding. That is, even though we have a, a slight increase of 1.19 ADA, it actually results to 51, we've, 51,000 of them, which is more than 1.19 students would do. But there, it's, there are all sorts of other changes behind the scenes as well that affect what the rate per student is. And we've done some sort of realigning of those, which is why that, it seems a little larger than you would think for one, about one student's ADA. But it's due to the formulas and the mix of students in various grade levels and things like that. So a bunch of other small adjustments as we go through. And then as we come to the, the increases to expense, we have ramped up professional development for various reasons. And one of those being we, we do still have funds from a grant that is specific for professional development. And we have a couple of years to spend that. And a lot of that is focused on, the title of the grant is the Educator Effectiveness Grant. So it's specific for teachers, making them more effective with instruction and providing, you know, positive educational environments, building culture, things like that at school. And that does include some other professional development. We've been doing the North Valley with Irene, who is wonderful. And it's, this grant has allowed us to work with her to a, an extent that we might not have otherwise been able to. So that's been really nice. Increases to books and supplies is largely due to Chromebooks. We had a lot of Chromebooks kind of expire is not the right word, but reach the end of their useful life. They get to a point where they can no longer update the operating system. Things, you know, like that, it's kind of their, their planned life is not as long as we would like it to be. But we had an unexpectedly large number this year that had to be replaced, so.
How long is their plan life?
You know, it's only like three to five years.
It's a priority.
Yeah, yeah, so. And the Chromebooks are, I mean, obviously they're not disposable, but, you know, they, they do cycle through new models and things pretty quickly.
Technology changes quick.
Yes, yeah, so we've been seeing it more towards the three-year mark. And we bought a ton of Chromebooks right around COVID times. And so now it's been, you know, three, four years, five, in some cases. We, we were buying a lot of Chromebooks kind of all throughout those first, you know, year after COVID started. So, so those are now getting replaced. And then the last thing here, the, the biggest chunk is actually due to, due to some communication issues and things, the, the contribution that Bob Firestone so kindly pointed out yesterday and thanked the board during public comment, the 403B non-elected contribution that goes to all employees actually ended up getting coded in this fiscal year. So there's a little miscommunication there, but it's, it's not an impact to the budget that is going to really, you know, affect anything in a significant, negative way due to all the other things that, that balance out. So our updated forecast, still positive, really close actually to what the forecast was previously. And how does that break out by site? So three of the sites have a small surplus. San Diego is projecting a small deficit. But most of the sites or all, all of the sites are, you know, fairly close to break even considering the size of their overall budgets. Cash balance, as we mentioned, this, this is wonderful to not see big ups and downs like we used to in the past. I'm depending on if, if the economics.
How does the state pay us? It doesn't pay us twice a year?
No, we, we get payments every month.
Oh, okay, interesting.
Yes, however, when there are deferrals, it really messes with things. And we have had in the past, it's been several years, but some of our capital, like we, you know, some counties will do wire transfers. Some of them do paper checks. Some of them do, you know, auditor transfers internally within their system. And depending on, on our four different schools and how the money comes in, sometimes there are delays between when the cash comes into the county and when we get it. So especially at North Bay, we had some things a few years ago that we worked to improve and we've seen really consistent.
So they, do we get money from the counties?
It passes through the counties.
They used to be, in the old days at least, there was a gyration between when property taxes were paid. It was December and then April for various reasons. And it was like two big months and everything else was chaotic. That was typically, you borrow the money from various funds to cover yourself. So that's not true anymore.
At least not for charter schools. I'm not sure exactly what the, the payments are like for school districts for property taxes. But for charter schools, we have a schedule where we get property tax payments every month. And then it gets readjusted two times a year. But similar to our standard state aid.
Is that based on the state rules or each county does its own thing?
So there's the, the local control funding formula, which is the state level school funding, which I believe that started in 2013. So there's a formula of, of how much each school should get based on their students and population and the grade levels and everything like that. The mix of how those funds are made up, whether it's a little bit of property tax and a lot of state aid or a lot of property tax and a little state aid, really depends on the locale and how, how, how much their property taxes are that they hold in. So, yeah, so it, it does vary quite a bit. And we, our, our funding through our counties is a fairly small proportion, property taxes compared to the, the majority is from the state. But it's very nice to have solid cash balance. And I think, I don't, I didn't point it out yesterday in the slide, but receivable sales for charter schools, that market has pretty much dried up from what I hear. So, you know.
They don't need it.
If, if we were to have tough cash times in the future, if we were to have a lot of, you know, deferrals on state payments or something, it could be difficult. So that's another reason why it is important for us to maintain at least that 90 days cash on hand. Because at least from my conversations with EdTech, I don't think they've had any schools that have tried to do it recently. But one of the big organizations that had done that in the past just kind of doesn't want to do it anymore for charter schools. So just one of those things that we're, we're trying to maintain this good cash balance so we don't have to, don't have to try to find other ways to get cash. Okay, any questions about current year forecast? Move on to 26. Okay, so the governor released his January budget proposal. The LCFF increase that's proposed in that funding increase for schools is a little bit less than the original estimate that was back in the, the June budget. And so it's 2.43, had been like 2.93. It's a little bit lower, but still higher than this year.
Below inflation, I guess inflation's starting to calm, but still.
Yeah, it's still, it's, it's very difficult. 2.43 is.
It's tough.
It's not a lot, yeah. And it's, school districts and charter schools alike are, you know, kind of.
Scrambling.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I don't know if it's scrambling. It's combined with the final tapering off of all the COVID monies and inflation increasing, cost of living increasing, trying to do right and give, you know, staff salaries that are, you know, livable and sustainable. It, it is a very complex and difficult situation. So as we go through the budget development and on the agenda today is to establish some ad hoc subcommittees, including the Budget and Compensation Committee, as we do every year. So once that subcommittee is established, we'll definitely be part of the conversations. You know, it's kind of developing the salary schedules, adjustments for the year.
You do it every year.
There are some new funding things proposed here, some of which don't have a lot of details. As mentioned yesterday, sometimes these new funding sources are not ones that we get due to being a non-classroom-based school, operating independent study programs. I don't have any information yet about whether we would be excluded from any of these. I have not heard that we would. So I'm hopeful that we would be eligible for some of these, you know, student supports and professional development, for example, would be great. The transitional kindergarten, the ones in yellow here on the improved funding, the first two don't apply to us at all because we don't offer transitional kindergarten. And then the ELVP, that's the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, that one is not available to non-classroom-based charter schools. So those, those don't apply to us at all. And then similar, you know, some of the continued funding things, again, we don't have a school kitchen and the universal meals as well. We, we don't get those monies because we don't have a fully functional school kitchen. The infrastructure that, to get reimbursements for school meals is not something that, that we currently have, so.
I wonder if all these fires, is that, is a lot of money going to have to go out to various places, with the state? How that impacts any of this or, I mean, you can see why, we like to do certain things, but we can't because we got $50 billion or whatever the number they're throwing around, which makes sense, actually. How that might impact all of this when they did the official budget itself, so.
Yes, and, and there are so many questions and moving parts that I'm sure once we get to the May revise, things might look very different. That, you know, there's been talk about, you know, not, not having FEMA aid for the, you know, I, I don't know if that, that sounds like it's not actually hopefully going to, to happen. But, you know, the other sources of funding that could help with that disaster relief and rebuilding and things like that, you know, impacts how much California has to pay for it. So don't know what's going to happen there. So, you know, there, there are lots of things that could affect the May revise. So I, I don't, I don't have a, a crystal ball to know what it'll look like in May. But at least the current projections for the next few years and kind of this shows the, the LCFF increases. So we had some really big ones during those first few years as we were coming out of COVID and trying to get back to a normal. This year was very small, only 1.07%. So at least the 2.43% that's proposed is larger than this year. But, you know, it really would be great to get back above 3% that is currently projected in the next three years. But who knows what will happen.
Especially with the fires, like you said.
Yeah. So looking ahead at the, the multi-year projection organization-wide, we do see a little bit of a negative in the third year out after this year. So we included this year and three more. Normally we show three years current plus two, but we wanted to show you plus three this year because there is a trend of, as we're tapering off those one-time funds, as we were discussing yesterday, and some of the enrollment size issues at North Valley and San Diego. But it does kind of make the whole organization-wide roads of education start getting progressively a little more and more negative, so.
So the difference between what we're looking here and what you showed us yesterday is that this is pivot-wide.
Yes.
And the net effect, so just making sure you guys. We didn't look at it yesterday in.
We looked at detail yesterday.
Yes, yeah.
The organization-wide picture. So, and just a couple of things to highlight here. Obviously, clean audit is always a triumph.
Way to go, Liz.
And this year's forecast is, is looking very stable. Next steps, the second interim is coming up, that is due March 15th. So you will see that for ratification since the meeting will be after March 15th. And then the governor's January budget, there is always kind of some clarifying things that come out afterwards about qualifications for certain types of grants and things like that. So we'll be monitoring that. Funding determinations for North Valley and San Diego were due today. We did them earlier this week, and so those have been submitted. They now need to be reviewed by the state. And we'll, we generally know around April what the results of those are. There, I have no reason to believe that there would be any issues with them. We should have those schools receiving 100% funding. But I did also just want to remind the board, I know we talked about this in the last couple of meetings, but the future of funding determinations is very uncertain at this point. We don't know how the process will change and when. There have been lots of studies and investigations, as Eric Primack mentioned yesterday.
All three of the ones he mentioned were like, this has got to change, which is on the common factor.
Yeah, so the, the current funding determination process looks at one year of finances and then determines your funding level for the next two to five years. And so you only have to show them a snapshot of one year of finances every so often. So there have been proposals to look at the, basically the, the requirements that are in the funding determinations as part of the annual audit every year to make sure that the, every school that is a non-classroom-based school is meeting the requirements on an ongoing basis every year, which makes sense. But it's, it would be a change to how we do things. You know, who's going to have the, the authority to approve a funding level? Will all non-classroom-based schools just automatically get 100% funding? And then, you know, have the auditor verify that that's correct? Not sure. I, I don't, don't know what the future of that will look like, but it is something that is most likely going to change within the next year, maybe two. So.
Yeah, and then it, it seems like it's a no-brainer, right? But it's not. Like last year, when Liz was looking at the fact that we had to do North Valley's funding determination based on the prior year.
And San Diego.
And San Diego, yeah. But North Valley was, were soft, so to speak-ish, which is why we're like, okay, so what instructional thing do we really need that we need to spend this money on? So there's no question. And so, you know, Liz and I, and we brainstormed on what we wanted to do. And so it's not, it's not always a, a done deal kind of a thing. We really have to take a look at it. And one of the reasons why we didn't, we were possibly maybe not going to meet the threshold is we decided not to hire an aide last year because we knew the aide monies were kind of disappearing and we weren't sure we were going to be able to sustain it. We didn't want to hire someone, blah, 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 blah. So anyway, so it's not a done deal. Liz has to get kind of creative sometimes, so.
Well, and the biggest piece for both North Valley and San Diego that, as EdTech and I were kind of problem solving on this, it's back to the enrollment. They're small schools, the fixed costs, you know, of administration and facilities and a lot of things that are not necessarily instructional, but are fundamental to operating a school. They, those costs can't, you know, there, there's a certain minimum level. And if your revenues are small because you're a small school, the proportion of those fixed costs that are not instructional is higher. So in order to have a balanced budget and meet the instructional spending requirements is very difficult for a small school. And if we do get the enrollment over 130, it'll be easy breezy to meet, you know, the, the instructional spending requirements, so.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Easy, breezy.
Easy, breezy.
That's a financial term.
Yes.
Technical term.
Very technical.
Okay, so we got the, let's see.
Well, we got, I did want to highlight just one other thing in addition to all the things we talked about, is North Bay and Riverside have their charter renewals coming up soon. I'm sure Jana will probably talk about that in her presentation. But there is, you know, a, a significant budget component. But there is, you know, a significant budget component to that, you know, and it's very important for us to, you know, plan and ensure that we have everything in place for charter renewal. And I believe that is it. Any questions?
Questions, board members? Pardon me, you guys have something going on? Craig, is there something going on? I'm trying to hear Liz.
I'm sorry.
And you want to talk to all of them? Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry, Liz, do you have any questions then of this? Okay, thank you. Then we'll jump to the executive director's report.
LCAP, sorry.
Oh, sorry, LCAP report, pardon, pardon.
That was my fault.
You want to, you coming over to help talk?
Come on, Abigail.
Yay.
All right.
Covering most of it yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is all in your packet, showing you actually how we spend the money. What Abigail talked about yesterday was, you know, high level on the goals and where we are in implementing them.
And just a little background as a reminder, because this is fairly new. There is now, as of last year, a requirement that prior to February 22nd every year, that we report to the board, a mid-year update that shows all of the available data for the metrics that we use in the LCAP, which we didn't talk about all of the metrics yesterday in that data, we talked about some of it, and our current, like, mid-year expenditures on the actions that we have in our LCAP. So yesterday was more of an overview of how things are going, you know, what are the goals and actions in the LCAP? And this is an update that shows all the available data about the metrics and expenditures and implementation, how's it going.
Yeah, and this document's kind of a summary, the data's not on this one in particular, it's in the other PDFs, but just kind of where we've self-evaluated we are with each action under each goal. If you can kind of read our summaries there, most we're feeling are fairly fully implemented, kind of up and running, a few are still getting up and running, like our community liaison, for example, which is their first year. And then in each school's individual LCAP, yeah, you can see our metrics, which is the data, this is what Jasmine helps a lot with, and redesigned for this cycle. The last cycle, there was lots of metrics that would be grayed out because of COVID, or we couldn't get good data because it was a year after COVID. So this one, this cycle will be way more informative and interesting, in my opinion, because you can already see the first two years of data, year one, year two, this is attendance, for example, and then the year we're in right now, oh no, this is the year we're in right now, next year will be the third year, and this is where we're hoping to end up by the third year, so it'll be, yeah, just a lot more filled in than the last cycle, which was very disruptive. Chronic absenteeism, every dashboard indicator is on here, every required metric is on here that the state tells us we have to have, and then a couple that we decided we wanted to use to measure ourselves. So, there's some, yeah, these are actions.
This is so much work.
I was just going to, I was just going to point that out.
But it is, it is one of the things that's required, I know. It actually helps you tell your story, all the things you're doing, it is very interesting, I mean.
Yes.
And the cost of each item, and the whole, it is.
It is a lot of, yeah.
It's like hundreds of hours.
A lot of data.
That's why we're excited for the new cycle, because we aligned it with what we are already looking at all the time. So that it's not so much a, you know, oh my gosh, we have to go check this off.
Right.
It's like, okay, we're really into these, these are the actions we really want to do, we're already looking at this data all the time anyway, let's just make it very, you know, incorporated, so.
Are those same requirements recorded in public school?
All traditional public schools, yes. Remember, we are a public school.
Well, I.
Traditionally.
Classroom-based, yes.
Traditional, yes.
Like, give school districts.
I can't believe that they spend that much time.
They do, they have entire huge staffs that work just on the LCAP in the big districts, in county, yeah, in the big districts. And then these go to our county, they kind of skip over the authorizer, we have to submit them to the county and to the state. But it does not in the ed code say that the county is responsible for it, but they have to review it, it's really bizarre and gray, so.
But the process of putting it together, even as you're looking at this, it helps you, I would think, crystallize in some of these things, how we're doing, where we are, it is actually a good.
It is useful, yeah, and like Abigail said, it's more useful now.
Even if nobody in the state probably reads it, but I think it's a.
The counties, our COE pushes back and adds things that they want us to see, and, I mean, that they want to see, and things they did a couple years ago.
Like Jana touched on yesterday, hopefully it's, because it's now kind of, like the dashboard, it's really up and running, it's been taking time, maybe it can replace some of the other compliance stuff we do that takes time too, but isn't as useful? Because, yeah, the idea behind this is, you're very specific of what you're doing to reach your goals, and you're very specific how you measure that, so in practice, that is a bit exercise to do.
You know the thing, I think it was some compliance, the district, it was 76 criteria, which is kind of like this, and you're going to go, until later on to the state legislature, are you kidding, I put the big word 76? What are the important ones? Tell me what they are. I mean, really?
Out of 76?
Or whatever, you know? Tell me the top five. Now, we'll, all right, we'll work on this top five, but I'm not going to work on 76.
And actually, it's kind of my wrong, I believe.
But they keep adding, I know they keep adding stuff, they don't take it down, but it's like, you know, really?
It's funny you say that, so, like, so new role now, they had this action plan with like 200 something things.
Oh, stupid.
I told the city council, I can't even, I said, we're going to have three or four, and you're going to tell me, here are the three or four things you really want to do, and if we did it, what does it look like? See you later.
This is the same thing, you know, I would say, because you can't do, you have, your brain and finances have to be in a certain year, we're going to do these things really well, and other things, not, we're not going to say anything about it, but, and we worked on those, and those are our top five, that are the most. But having a whole list, I know, there's bureaucracies, and I get that, true corporations do, happens, I've seen it, but on the other hand, really?
Yeah, and we tried to do that in our process too, same exact thinking. So we used to have four bowls, we cut it down to three.
Yep.
We have to look at the dashboard anyway, it's incredibly important, so all those are here. So wherever we can kind of merge things, simplify things, and get our priorities straight, we've really tried to do that. Because this is a 32-page document per school, like, it may not look that way, but we all kind of are speaking this language, so I think it is a lot more useful and a lot more efficient.
And there are so many required metrics, like you mentioned, you know, there's, I mean, there's maybe not 76 of them, there are quite a few. And there's a lot of overlap, as Abigail just said, and, you know, with like the SARC and the LCAP, and then, you know, accreditation, and, you know, there's all kinds of these things that, there's so many reports we do, and ironically, thankfully, hopefully, the state actually recently just commissioned a group to make a report about the number of reports.
Swear to God, I cannot wait to read that one.
I want to get on that committee.
At least they're aware there's a problem.
They just have a thing about legislature, if you pass a bill, they've got to remove a law.
Yeah.
You're going to balance the two, and some things are so old, anyway.
They were so proud of themselves this year that they reduced the number of bills number, you go from 50 to 35.
Yeah. Well, it used to be, was it?
35 bills.
New Hampshire, they meet every other year or something like that, you shouldn't be bothering them anymore, legislature.
So hopefully, when they see the number of reports, they'll maybe do some trimming.
Yeah, you can believe that one, you can drink it.
Well, good stuff, a lot of work. How many people worked on this? A whole lot of folks, huh? The Ministry of Defense.
So it's mostly Abigail, Liz, a little bit of Kristen, because a lot of it's MTSS, and then a woman named Jasmine that I shouted out to yesterday, who is our data coordinator, that all of those, all that data, most of it, I mean, Abigail does some of it too from her end, but it's mostly them.
How many hours goes into this report? 200?
Probably.
Month of work.
Yeah, a lot of it is on the data and the fiscal end of getting those reports, yeah.
Does this get hazard paid?
It's, at least it's, it is helpful.
I do offer my data off to them.
It is helpful.
And we're looking for ways, speaking of efficiency, to use this to drive more broad leadership conversations, so that we're not doing it kind of isolated, and then showing it to you, and then putting it away. So we're thinking about ways to bring it to our 10, 15-person leadership team, because we're having these conversations anyway, so we can just show the data in this format, and everyone will kind of get used to seeing it in this format, because we're showing them that data anyway, so we're looking at ways to make it more valuable in our conversations, yeah.
Any questions on anything? Okay, well, that, thank you, that was something. All right, so we'll keep these reports, so there's really no public comment, we'll keep moving to Jana, go ahead. Big executive director report.
All right. Just the overview of what I'm going to talk about in open session here today. Ten, ten, really, more reports. So I wanted to introduce you to the PhD in neuroscience, Irene Salter. She literally worked in neurosciences, no, I can't do it. She was a scientist, she was a scientist.
Neuroscience.
Neuroscience. But if you go to her webpage, actually, and I did for the first time when I was trying to pull this picture off, she had this whole thing where she said, she said, after struggling with self-worth and burnout, she found the balance through neuroscience and positive psychology and helps others to do the same. Amy gave you some examples of how she's teaching our staff and our leadership to kind of get in their own heads, and to analyze things a little bit differently, think about things a little bit differently. So some of the things, we hired her to work with leadership team all year, Brittany and I have met with her individually, I have met with her individually.
How did you find her?
She presents, she started presenting at some of the conferences a couple years ago, Brittany and Liz went to some of her breakouts, and when I said, look, I really want to do this with the leadership team this year, and they're like, oh, you should check out Irene, and I started talking to her and blah, 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 you know, she, so, and I was really impressed, and I started attending some of her breakouts, and then we hired her. And then I knew that it was going to be kind of a tough year for North Valley, and I'm like, oh, what a great person to help them process without their boss being there, right? So, without me having to be in the middle of it, knowing what I knew that she could do to help them, you know, process things. So then I also did a contract for her to work with North Valley. So monthly meetings, as you saw with them, she attends, we have our leadership meetings from 1:00 to 2:00 every Monday, and then we meet with Irene once a month from 2:00 to 3:00 as a leadership team, there's 14 of us, we're also, you'll see, we're heading down to San Diego soon. But she's amazing, she's just really, really, really amazing. So, and this is a little bit of repeat, but I wanted to do my own shout-out to Pivot North Valley. So, they did a great job. Everybody who, you know, they divided everything up between them for first semester, and it was, it was bumpy, you know, and I knew it would be. And they did an amazing job. And I said to them, and I meant this, I knew going in that they would be okay. I don't think it felt like that all the time necessarily, when they were going through it, but I knew they could do it, given, you know, who was there.
You were talking about the outstanding staff there, and it's going to be stuff, but knowing those kind of people are there. You know, that's, you've got the assets sitting there going, these are good people, they can, they'll figure this out with some help, so, so way to go.
Yeah, and in any given year, at any given site, I don't know that I would have felt that way all the time, because everybody, you know, all our sites are going through different things and different staffs, so I'm very, 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 very proud of everybody there. Okay. So, staff in progress, we have five on personal leave, and may I take that four new babies up to six? Six, in the last week. We have two more added to it. Can't tell anybody anything without, I mean, mentioning names, but we will have six babies born to Pivot this year, in one year. So we do have people out on various leaves of absences now and into the future. So that leaves holes, leaves gaps, right? And we already had holes and gaps. So we are, we were looking for ESs and ECs. We have hired one new ES who's still processing through our paperwork, and two new ECs, one of whom is going to start next week-ish, and probably both the new ECs will start, one is here in North Bay and one is in San Diego, but the San Diego one will serve North Bay, because obviously we don't have the enrollment at San Diego, and you know how that works. And the new ES is only part-time, and he is actually out of North Valley, and he's a retired principal and former special ed teacher who had to retire early due to an injury and wants to get back with kids again. So, I had some fun up there interviewing him face-to-face at North Valley while I was there. And we still need one to two more education specialists, probably two, because it'll roll over into next year. And I did post, as I think I informed you in other communications, for a new director of special education, James has announced that he'll be moving back east, which is great with his, with his girlfriend, soon to be, hopefully, he said he hopes, and he says that to everybody, so I'm not announcing anything, that I shouldn't, is fiance. So I have, we have one internal candidate that has applied already, I just got word late last night from a friend of a friend of a friend who knew I was looking, another fellow charter leader, that she's sending me somebody as well, that she recommends, and I highly appreciate that, because I appreciate.
For sure.
So we will be spending a lot of time on those interviews, and the way those interviews work is, there's only four of us, it's myself, Abigail, Craig, and, sorry, myself.
Shannon Rogers.
Huh?
Shannon Rogers.
And Shannon Rogers, who's, thank you. I'm like, I know there was something really good from special ed there. Shannon Rogers, who is one of our special ed mentors and a wonderful teacher, and she's been a former director of special ed. But we are the interview team, and then there'll be another panel, which will include at least Brittany, and then some special ed staff at Sykes, and people that this person will work most closely with. And last time, we went to a third level of interviews, a third panel. So this is probably one of the most important jobs, including more than mine, within our organization, because of the legal liability around it. So it is a very, very time-consuming process and a very important one. So when I tell you I can't meet with you because I have lots of interviews, that is lying. So back to reports. Little snapshot of all the things that are happening with our huge reports that are due, even beyond the ones that we usually bring to you. North Bay continues to qualify for differentiated assistance. County offices of ed are the ones that work with school districts and charter schools. It has been, and Abigail, please chime in, because you've been at all the meetings, too, it has been a delightful experience working with Sonoma County Office of Ed. I mentioned yesterday how incredible they are, how experienced their staff are, how open they are to working with us, and they've been super helpful.
And they share their pastries.
And they share their pastries. Tim, we got your pastry, if you're watching. So, last year, all students and subgroups, we had kind of qualified us, I don't want to get into like all the nitty-gritty on this, but low performance on English Language Arts and Math, high chronic absenteeism, and low graduation rates, and it was all of our subgroups. This year, it's for low performance in ELA and Math, absenteeism, graduation rates, but it is more for our Hispanic students and our low-income students. And so these are a couple of the things that we are moving forward with, implementing restorative practices with community matters, we have a training in February for that as part of it. The other thing is, we have a contract with Sonoma County Office of Ed that doesn't have a dollar amount to it, because they're required to do this for us for free, I got a reply to that message, sorry, that they're going to be doing professional development with us as well, and we get their experts to help us to figure out this. But then Kristen, Travis, and Abigail, and about every other meeting, me, we attend these meetings with Sonoma County Office of Ed as well, and then there's lots of reporting to do around it, as you can imagine. So I'm really excited about it, it's forcing us to take, you know, really hold up a mirror and take a look at ourselves, and take all that data and all that stuff in the LCAP, and go even deeper, down a rabbit hole, not a deep dive. And so, I said not a deep dive.
That's what I thought.
So, and with the support of these incredible people that have been in education for a long time, and have a really good lens from the outside looking in, so again, I appreciate skill. Liz and I have had so much fun together working on this one. Federal program monitoring, processes by the Department of Education to monitor how local agents, local education agencies implement categorical programs. Yeah, yeah, we only actually qualify for three out of the 18 programs, 21 programs, and within each one of these three, there's about 56 pieces of evidence and explanation we have to give for each one of these three.
We're going to doge this.
It's insane, it's basically a federal audit implemented by the state.
I had somebody work for me that could do this, and it's to write something that doesn't hold its accountable for anything, but just a lot of words, because nobody's going to read it.
Well.
So sometimes you got to put a lot, not much effort into it, and just do it.
Now, what they do, though, is they have us upload our evidence into the portal, so it's not just, yeah, we do this, and here's how we do it, and we can use ChatGPT and BS. So it's not just, yeah, we do this and here's how we do it and we can use chat GPT and BS it. No, that we have to actually upload evidence. Board meeting agendas, staff meeting agendas, Abigail's agendas with her group and the program.
General ledger.
General ledger has to be uploaded, believe it or not, the entire general ledger.
Entire general ledger?
Yeah.
Wow.
So each one of these things, CDE, which is a head for that, SSAD, which is student support and improvement. And school support and improvement have like 56 different things. So, so yeah, that's what Liz and I are working on. And it's, we will be meeting with Sonoma County Office of Ed and CDE and possibly our authorizer.
And this is because we have certain situations and student performance and other things?
No, this is actually because we take federal monies for certain programs.
I believe this one is more random in selection.
Like TSA, huh? You're lucky. Oh, okay.
So the CDE, compensationary education is largely focused on Title I. And SSAD is Title IV. And so when Jana mentioned all these other ones, those are generally federal funds that we don't take with Title III and.
The other 19 that we didn't qualify. So, yeah. So fun stuff.
Enjoy yourself.
Yeah. Also, your executive director lost.
Is we're already due for this again?
Yeah. And guess.
I thought we just did it.
Guess who forgot? And they were reaching out to me, reaching out to me. And because of how busy and challenging and fun and wonderful and expensive this year has been, I did not sign up for, for the first time in 30 years, doing a WASP visit where I'm the chairperson, right? I said, nope, 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 not going to happen this year. And then they kept trying to get in touch with me. I'm like, guys, I can't, I can't. They're like, Jana, we're not trying to get in touch with you to ask you to do this. Your schools are due. I'm like, oh, holy crap, sorry, guys. So yeah, I'll be spending some time writing some reports. But if you recall, when we went through it, you know, we got us, we had a, we got a six-year, you know, WASP, but there's always, always 90% of the time, a one-day review in the middle called a mid-year review. So, yeah, so I was ignoring them. I wasn't ignoring them. I'm like, no, sorry, guys. I just wasn't.
They weren't asking you.
I wasn't reading it as well as I probably should have. So, yeah.
Our high school's going through this in two weeks. The visit's coming.
Yeah. And it's, so I'm going to be doing some writing, a lot of writing, because it's, I got to, I'm going to submit it the day before I leave for my trip. And then they're going to come visit us when I get back. So I have to hear for Anna. She had to go home. Her mom had a wonderful celebration, hopefully, last night of something she's been working on for a long time. So that's why she couldn't be here. She wanted me to apologize. So community liaison update, I will have her here next time and updating you personally. Care Solis, remember her job was focused on, you know, when we talked about it the last strategic plan, she's doing a wonderful job. Focused on building relationships in the communities, getting us to be an invaluable resource in the communities, but also that our students would benefit from most of them. Care Solis is a national company that essentially the quick version is, because this is an area that we have always struggled with. And when Kristin took over as being MTSS coordinator, she's like, ah, it's so frustrating because these kids need something more than school counseling. A lot of these kids that are on the multi-tiered SISMA support and just multi-supports. And so Care Solis, our counselors and our crisis team, that Corinne is the head of, can make referrals to Care Solis, who have counselors and all kinds of access to all kinds of mental health supports all over the country, and they will take over from there. And, and getting that family services. So what, you know, we have, the counseling team put together amazing resources and they will hand it to the family. But no one's following up with them because that's not our job, right? So we don't know whether they take advantage of it. We don't know if they have questions and we don't know if they're ever going to pick up the phone and call one of them. So now Care Solis will make sure that someone is at least attempting to get them the help that they need beyond the school-based counseling. And especially when we have, you know, suicidal ideations and people on, you know, being hospitalized and things, that we have some more support. So I'm very excited that we have that up and running. She has, as you know, board taken over social media postings, which used to be a task of, of Trepey Smith. And we've always, always, always wanted someone internal to be doing this because the person internal knows what is going on every single day. And again, I said it yesterday that Trepey Smith can only do with, you know, what we, what we give them, right? So, so she is now doing that and she's translating them all into Spanish and she's doing more on Instagram and YouTube. She's doing videos at each school and she's going to do a little, continue with our YouTube channel because you mentioned it yesterday, Jim. Facebook ain't it anymore for the generations, right? So she is focusing on more of the, the more modern social medias. So she's working with Abigail on family engagement and homerooms. Abigail set out a calendar of homerooms for parents and Abigail's got a ton on her plate. And this falls into the area of community outreach and family outreach. So Anna is also supporting Abigail in getting these homerooms up and, up and running and making all the announcements about the homerooms. I've got her just starting to work with credential programs because we need staff. So I need, you know, wonderful bubbly Anna going out and reaching out to these credentialing programs, Sonoma State and, and San Marcos and, you know, going, hi, you have teachers, we have a school, can we play in the sandbox together? Can you do your student teach, send us your student teachers? Sonoma State won't send us their student teachers. We need Anna to get in there and convince them that we are good and strong and we can support. I, it's just a lot of bureaucracy and paperwork and to add us, to add us, what?
The fact that we're non-classified.
Yeah, and we're non-classified.
Direct instruction the way that a traditional class. That's what primary.
It's very hard to get a credential.
Yeah. Well, like, so we had an aide that was working on her credential. She was, she's amazing and hopefully she will come back as a full-time EC next year. She was with us for two and a half years, I think. And she had to leave us. We could continue to pay her while she's doing her student teaching, but they won't let her. So now she's, you know, not getting paid and doing student teaching somewhere else. So anyway, that's no fun. So Anna's going to start reaching out to all of those and getting us hopefully some good teachers for next year. Wellness Fair, she's done one at every single campus. I have the dates of the next one. Bringing in vendors, the kids show up, the families show up, make a big deal out of it. We have a taco truck. And then each little vendor, like we have the, the doggies, you know, the service doggies and that's always popular. We have LGBTQ agencies that are supporting kids. We've got mental health agencies. We have, what else is, let's see, what else was there? Anyway, but it's, there's like usually seven, eight, nine, 10 vendors and then we get all the families and their parents and their kids out. If you feed them, they will come. So.
How often does she get to you say?
Probably about once every month and a half. You know, two months, yeah. Her biggest thing now is coming around to do the videos of the kids and, and so that for the YouTube channel. So that's, that's kind of her next round of visits. She came yesterday just for the strategic plan and she had, she knew she was somewhere beforehand and she had to head back. So I love that. Internships, she really wanted to talk to Pat because remember the thing that Pat was talking about last year with internships? We reached out and so, Pat, if you're listening, we need to talk to you. But she put together an entire manual. Abigail's reading it now because I had to program and then we'll have our attorneys look at it and implementing internships. Did someone just raise a question?
Pat is on.
Oh, there she is. Pat, we're talking about internships. We're really excited. So.
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah. So Anna's put, already moved forward though and, and has done, you know, the manual, looking into the policies. We have to get liability insurance for the kids, all that stuff. So she's working on that. Oh, did she? Okay. Can she say something as a public member? No? No.
I don't think so. Sorry, Pat.
As you know, she's got all kinds of visitors, visits from elected officials all over the place. That continues. And she just tells me where to, she looks at my calendar and she tells me where to be and I show up. And so, and if I can't be for some reason, she can, and I feel very, very comfortable with her, you know, meeting and greeting them. But so that is happening. So she usually shows up at the sites and she makes that happen for me as well. So, and site visits, again, we just talked about it. She's going around from site to site, doing some videoing and trying to get everybody to get to know her so they reach out to her more and they get to understand her role more. And then she is also doing a lot of professional development. She's attending a whole series of foster homeless youth series. And also the National Parent Engagement Conference is one of the ones she's going to go to. So she is working her way back up. Why? Because that's her job is to engage our families.
What is she going, training you for what?
So she's also our foster and homeless liaison. So there's a lot of trainings for all the laws around that and how to help students that are foster and homeless. But then her, you know, she wears a lot of hats, reaching out, community liaison outreach is a lot of things, including engaging our families. We have tried parent-teacher associations. We have tried school-site councils. SSCs are actually required. We can't get parents to want to come and do things with us like that. It's just a different mindset here. So, and I frankly ran out of time and gave up, to be honest, a couple, you know, handful of years ago. So she's via the homerooms and then Anna's efforts, we are trying to find ways where our parents do want to engage with us. Because as you know, Tom, the more engaged the parents are, the better off the kids do, right? So, and it helps us. It helps us know where we need to improve rather than just sending out a silly Google survey. You know, we actually have parents in front of us. Remember the years that you guys did your board, meet the board member at each site and like one person showed up? You know, we just can't.
But they loved us.
They did. The one person that showed up loved you.
It was a cool mom. I met a cool mom.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, so she's working on that. So the National Parent Engagement Conference, I think it's national, it is national, right Liz? Will give her other ideas, you know, on how we can help engage our families. But keep in mind though, our teachers are talking to parents every week, which is way different than a traditional public school seat-based program. So that is engagement in and of itself, which is why they're probably like, I don't want to serve on some council. I have to meet with my teacher every other week and when my kid's not doing well.
I'm more interested in her though, not, I don't want her getting weighted down on family engagement of our own customers as opposed, I think it's more important she's in the community, building our reputation to get new customers and, and raise awareness of our school and what it's doing, right? I mean, so I appreciate she's going to that conference and everything else, but I hope that doesn't become this internal service thing.
No, 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 no. It's, it's just a tiny piece of what she's doing, as you can see from the bullet list. So important upcoming dates and there are lots more important dates when it comes to school site to school site that isn't up here. But we are filming with Fox Five at Pivot San Diego on February 18th. So President's Day Monday, I will fly out and go down there. And then I will, the quick version is we will have, they're focusing on San Marcos. Fox Five in San Diego does little communities and the businesses in the communities. It's costing us six grand, five and a half thousand dollars. And we will have, and there, with that comes how often it's going to be on and the snippets. And then we own the videos. I had Trepey Smith vet them, talk to them before, you know, I'm like, I don't know if this is real. I mean, they, I get this kind of stuff all the time. So, so that'll be fun. We'll be filming that and you'll see that and hopefully that will help get the word out in the community. Community Matters, as I mentioned, the restorative practices, the counselors and select leadership team members that community, that restorative practices will affect will be here in North Bay physically. We'll fly them in to be here with them. The Wellness Fair that Anna's putting on for Pivot Riverside will be February 26th. Liz and I will be meeting February 28th with the County and Oak Grove on our FPM. And then March Leadership Planning Meeting, all the entire leadership plan team is going down to San Diego like we did last year for planning for next year. That same night as we're leaving San Diego, we will all drive up to RCOE and Brandon and Abigail and Craig will be presenting to the RCOE board. And I'll be in the audience going, nice job. Good. I love it. So, so they're working on that presentation for RCOE. And then the CCSA conference, the California Child Schools Association Conference is the ninth to the 12th. We have a good handful of people going to that. And then CDE will visit us for March 19th to check us out on our FPM audit. And then April and May, we will be doing some prime hiring. Abigail, myself, Kristin, sometimes Corinne, Craig and our site leaders will be doing hiring. Assemblyman, Assemblymember James Gallagher will be visiting North Valley, so I'll go up there to visit them. And then the Pivot North Valley Wellness Fair on May 7th, I think the next slide has, oops, yeah, graduations. Get your calendars out, folks. I will send this to you as well, but here's the first time you're seeing it. We just wrapped it up, got our contracts in hand and we are ready to go. Riverside, May 28th, San Diego, May 29th. Pivot North Valley, June 4th, and North Bay, June 5th. And unfortunately, your board meeting, the big budget board meeting is the 7th. We could not get Santa Rosa Junior College on the 6th, which we were trying to do because you'd like to go to graduation as a group because they are actually closed on Fridays. They have no staff to support us. So they could not contract for the 6th. I don't know what you all want to do about that, whether maybe you want some people to come in on the 5th, but then they wouldn't have anything to do all day on the 6th because we don't meet until the 7th. Or do we want to, I don't know. Do we want to change the board meeting to a Friday? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there because we, we've said, we, you all said, you missed going to a graduation as a full.
Yeah, that's pretty neat.
Board. Some of you haven't seen a North Bay graduation. It's pretty freaking impressive. I think it's been Ralph and. At Santa Rosa Junior College, it's a whole new experience. Remember, it used to be over the golf club.
Yeah.
So do you want to think about? Riverside, you went to at a college, yeah, at Norco.
So what's the question?
So the question is, can, do some of you want to come in on the 5th for graduation, which it's at four o'clock, I think, three o'clock? Time is graduation usually four here at North Bay, four. Come in early. You have a whole day on the 6th to work out of a hotel room and our board meeting is still on the 7th.
I have a lot of work to do.
Or do you want? I'll check in with your, with your executive assistant Barbara and make sure that's true. Or do you want to try to move the board meeting to Friday the 7th? No, sorry, Friday the 6th. And everybody come in on the 5th to go to graduation. And we have the board meeting on Friday the 6th.
That sounds better. I think that makes sense.
That's better, yeah.
You'd have a full board, but that's only if y'all can make it instead of just some of you. You'd have to land Thursday at like two or three.
North Bay.
This is here. And you won't be there.
I'll be at the same.
Okay.
Well, it could be, anyway, so go to graduation on Thursday.
Yes. And have the board meeting Friday.
Meeting on Friday.
There's a late Friday flight route.
Okay. Anyway, yeah, yeah, putting it together. Yeah. As opposed to having a day in the middle. That's stupid.
Yeah. Or, or you just didn't go to graduation and you could individually choose to come early. I mean, that, those are your options.
So I would say move the board meeting to the Friday.
I think I can do that.
Do that. And that makes it easier options.
And then yes, you can get out of your Friday afternoon. Evening, whatever.
Well, even if, whatever it is, it still moves it closer to evening. If we had to get a flight out that's on Saturday, we're still keeping it more compact.
Yeah, you could get out Saturday morning.
All right. So board may, all right, graduation be on Thursday, board meeting on Friday.
Okay.
The 6th. Yeah.
Okay. Oh, good.
Oh, she did?
Good. Good. All right. I like it. So Romello, did you hear that? Well, I mean, you'll get the notes, but it's better that you know in advance.
She also said you can set a meeting up of her the week after next to talk about internships.
Okay. I'll have Anna do it, actually.
Great.
So. Yeah, you can't be virtual. Well, the, the laws don't allow you to be virtual unless you're super, super sick and.
There's a whole series of tests.
We qualify.
We'll talk about that offline since it's, all right. So that, we will change that. We will let Travis know it'll be a full board. Somebody remind me to let Travis know it'll be a full board. Because that's about setting that things up. Okay. Additional news, just, we're getting all kinds of mixed messages about, you know, immigration enforcement. Just know that it's a thing and we don't really need to talk about it. But it's, I'm getting hit with four or five different memos and conflicting.
Yeah, all schools are.
Schools are kind of, yeah, they're just trying to protect kids and figure out what we can do and can't do. So that is on my radar and I am attending lots of trainings on it. Mandatory board ethics, yeah, board member ethics. You guys need to be ethical and we need to train you on how to be ethical.
Why?
I don't know. I kind of like you the way you are. The state. I know, you still have to do that.
It's every two years, right?
Every two years? This year.
Yeah.
So it's required this year.
The first one has to be done in 2025 and then it's every two years.
Has it always been every two years? I only thought it was.
The ethical one is a new one.
I wonder if, how, is it like a Form 700 where you have to file for each office or, because I do this for my real. Or I do this for my real job. I wonder if that certificate applies to this. I'll have to check.
No, you, you really need to.
We do not know, but we think, just like the other training, you will have access to one online.
Oh, yeah, there's, you send us a link and we can take it. You get a little certificate that you report.
So you would prefer that than me bringing in an ethicist?
Yes.
An ethicist, yes.
We can watch it asynchronously.
There we go again, making fun of me now.
All right, done. When you get it, you now know that it's a requirement. You better get it done in 2025.
Are you gonna send us the stuff?
No, don't do that. Send it to us and say you need this done by May 30.
I don't have anything to say. Have you gotten any ones online? No, they haven't.
No, but you should send us a link, huh? No, no, we have to take, I take ethics, it's one, two, three, four training. Harassment and ethics you're supposed to take. We're supposed to take harassment training, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As board, because we're, you're a employer, I mean.
Our char, our liability company does not require the board members.
Interesting. Okay.
I, we, I have to. I have 64 hours of vector training to do, which it's, it's harassment.
I know everything about pesticide.
You can run space, pray for bugs and stuff?
Yes, yes. That, literally, literally, that's an hour and a half training, that one.
So we have to do something or other.
Okay, so we will send. Brandy, will you put it on your radar and try to charter safe to see whether they are going to do an ethics study? And then if not, we'll have to reach out to the.
We can get an extra, it'd be very easy.
Yeah, it'd be very easy, so, thank you. All right, fire updates. Pivot San Diego, Pivot Riverside have been taking things to donation stations. Anna actually delivered a lot in the whole car full. There are four charter schools that are partially or completely burned down. Eight of them have smoke damage, bad smoke damage, like must move out smoke damage. So my wonderful colleagues that went through the Paradise Fire, Casey and Mary, Corbute and Paradise Schools went down there and helped out quite a bit. So did our attorney, Lisa Corr. So a lot of people kicking it in down there. So there are some, as all of you know, because you've been in business with the property insurance business. Yeah, so some of those areas, they were high risk. So the coverage was great. Altadena was labeled low risk. So there, I'm not saying I know this as a fact, but I'm assuming that they're probably underinsured, right? Because they were low risk, I mean. Their rates were lower, yes. Yeah, yeah, that's true. They're, I'm sorry, you're right.
They were paying less, they'd be covered.
Yes. It's gonna go up big time across the board.
Across the state.
Across the state, exactly. Because they gotta cover all this stuff.
Yeah, just heads up when you see a much bigger bill.
So what you have, reality of insurance.
So we belong to CharterSafe. 163 CharterSafe insurance clients own their own properties. And sorry, I left out a number here. I'm sorry.
And lease.
Sorry, no, 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 sorry, can reverse it. So I got, I have it somewhere in my notes. I'll send it to you because you've asked me before, how many charter schools own versus lease?
Yeah.
Yes. So I do have at least from CharterSafe's perspective and those, the clients that are with CharterSafe, which is not every charter school, some numbers on this, I'll send it to you because it's in my notes and I just wrote it on here. So not many own, let's just put it that way. Pasadena Charter School was a conversion charter school, which meant it used to be a traditional public school that converted to a charter school back in like 1995 or something. So that was one of the ones that, you know, was the biggest. One of the concerns is that landlords might start, you know, property insurance in most cases and is, the landlord has the lion's share of it, right? It's their property if it burns down, so.
But it's commercial, it's a commercial lease, you pass it through.
Yes, and so they are gonna start passing it through. That's another concern and say, no, 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 we're not covering you anymore. You're gonna have to add it on your insurance.
I'm sure it's included in our lease here, property tax insurance, triple net lease.
Different ones are different, so anyway, yeah. Anyway, so.
It's actually interesting. I wonder if we're over insured through CharterSafe and then through our triple.
No, I don't think we have.
CharterSafe isn't property insurance, is it?
Yeah, it is. It's property, it's child sexual abuse, it's workers' comp, it's employee relations and it's directors and officers.
I'm not sure how the share breaks down for like internal fire, like if a computer catches on fire and burns the inside of the building versus like a wildfire type situation. Because in general, we are responsible for all the interior and our content.
It's like renters' insurance.
And the landlords are generally responsible for the building exterior and like roof and things like that. So I'm not quite sure how, how the hard going between insurance companies.
The concern is that, you know, landlords are not gonna say, yeah, we're not even covering the building, that's on you. So, and it hasn't, it's starting to happen down in Southern Cal. It is, it's already starting to happen. They want to pass it.
It's not, it's not, it's not our law, it's their law. That's their, that's stupid on their part.
But also, aren't they just passing it through anyhow?
Directly, triple net lease. Like I've got a commercial building and when I rent to commercial tenants, they have, they cover share property taxes, share insurance.
So it's, it's just higher.
It's gonna go up.
I don't think they're gonna say, I'm not gonna cover it. That'd be dumb.
Is there a heater in this place?
Trying to keep it brief.
All right, let's keep rolling. We got, we got, we got a lot. We got a lot to do, all right. Thank you.
They don't want to make it too comfortable.
That's right.
Great, great, great. Guys are bringing it up.